To the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, November 15, 2016. Please stand. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord God, for what you've already done. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ for those who are hurting, Lord, in our community. We pray for the family who have lost. We ask you, Lord God, to help them even now. Father, we pray for those who are sick. We ask you, Lord, to heal them even now. We pray, Father, for this country. We pray for those who are in leadership position. We pray for the new elected president. We ask you, Lord God, to give him counsel, give him wisdom, give him understanding of those things that are important to this nation. We pray for his family. We lift him up in the name of Jesus. We pray, Lord God, that you bless us and keep us in your care. Direct us in this meeting today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Approve the minutes on November 1, 2016. Regular meeting in suspense with the reading. Second, council, please cast your vote. We have one add-on.
Yes, sir. We have one add-on today. It will be item number 13 under New Business Adopt a Resolution to Hire or Promote Two Utility Workers in Water Distribution to Replace Vacant Positions in Public Utilities. First and final reading.
I can make a motion. We had that item 13 to our agenda.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. You have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is that, we don't need to add Mr. Littlejohn? Okay.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Ms. Stacy Brown from the Shreveport Bossier Tourist Commission. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I appreciate all of you allowing me to come before you today and tell you a little bit more about what's been happening in 2016 and what we can expect for 2017. You have at your table a business plan, a budget, and a couple of other items there, a visitor guide, an eat here guide, a little pamphlet on the fun guide, just other resources and tools that you may want to use or encourage others to use that you meet along the way. As you can tell, we work very hard on producing quality materials to support our marketing efforts throughout Caddo and Bossier parishes. And today, I'd like to show you just a few very brief videos, if we can get those to Go on YouTube and you search Bossier or Shreveport. A lot of the images that come up are not always wonderful. Sometimes they're flooding, or they may be of violence that's not really relevant or not really indicative of the kind of things a visitor or a potential employee wants to see in the community that they're considering moving to. So one of the things we've done is really work hard on adding more and more positive videos to YouTube and making it easy for people that are interested in Shreveport Bossier, whether it's to visit or relocate their business or come here to, as a potential employee, we want them to see positive images of the whole area. So we've really added a number of those. It might be a brief one about shopping. It might be a little one about the family. It might be something about eating and dining in our area. So just positive images to really encourage people to come back. As you can tell, we really have a passion for what we do at the Convention and Visitors Bureau and really promoting all that there is to see and do. And we can tell that you have a real passion for our communities, too. And you make our jobs easier by the things that you do, such as making sure that things look nice and clean, providing great streets and the great services that the city provides, but also the wonderful things that you're doing in product development that you have in the past with like the Louisiana Boardwalk and that you're working on currently with the new downtown re-envisioning. Those are all things that visitors like to see and want to come and experience when they come to our area. Each year, as we go about preparing our plan for the next year, we review all of our programs. We look at local, national, and regional trends. We bring an outside consultant to really challenge us on what are we thinking? What are we doing? What are those cutting-edge programs and making sure that we're including those? So this year, we had Jill Kitter come in, who has been, worked for Convention and Visitors Bureaus across the country and has worked both as a hotelier and an attractions manager as well. So she knows the industry very well, and she had some great suggestions for us, really helped us dig in and see where some of those challenges were. Really, one of our biggest challenges is the economy, as you all know. With visitors, we're doing still very strong in our convention business and our sporting business, as well as our leisure travel is still holding in there. It's the corporate and business travel where we're really lacking right now in Shreveport Bossier. So we've come up with our business plan that you have in front of you, and in the back of that, there are a couple of surveys, the back two pages. The survey that was done by meeting planners gives us kind of what are those things that they like about our area, what are some of the reasons they choose, and how often they choose to come to Shreveport Bossier, their impression of our destination, but also some visitor research. This past year, 53% said they've visited three times or more within the past year. And what we see is that we are very high visitation, repeat visitation. Most of our visitors come multiple times. So it's giving them another reason to come, something new, a new festival, a new event, giving them a date to select so that they'll come back to Shreveport Bossier. One of the top five places they've visited in the past year was the Louisiana Boardwalk. That resonates very well with our visitors. A concert in Central Link is also very high in getting them to come back, as well as the restaurants. And of course, one of the main things people cite is the reason they came is friends and family. You pass on the good word and you encourage them to come see you. So it's, that's a really key in making sure that we have a positive influence on our local people so that they're inviting their friends and relatives to come in. Forty-one percent also said they used our visitor guide, social media, as well as the other avenues for getting information about Shreveport Bossier. As you know, with the economy, there is projected to be a slight rebound in oil prices in late 2017, more significantly in 18. They are seeing, of course, some expansion in Baton Rouge and Lake Charles, but our area of the state is still lagging. There is weakness in exploration in the gaming markets, and it's driven employment down further for Shreveport Bossier. But exploration will continue to impact the area negatively through 2017, leading to a flat year of employment. However, they are projecting about 600 new jobs for 2018 with gains at Barksdale Manufacturing and High Tech leading the way. According to Smith Travel Research, Louisiana overall is down in occupancy about 2.8%. Baton Rouge and New Orleans are down about 2.6%. Lafayette is down 6.3%. Louisiana North as a whole is down 4.1%. And Shreveport Bossier is down 3%. So overall, with our increases in the sporting, leisure, as well as the convention markets, we've been able to offset some of that decline from the business market. However, there is some good news. The Texas economy, which is our major visitation market, has been in expansion after contracting in early 2016, suggesting that the worst of the energy bust may be over. So in 2017, it's going to be really important that we market to markets that are lucrative and that will provide a quick return on investment. So sports marketing will continue to be a priority, as well as building, along with the positive momentum with the convention and group sales. The leisure market continues to drive tourism with the casinos and expanded tourism offerings, especially the ever-evolving food scene. More and more people are traveling for culinary tourism. So we're really working to make sure we take advantage of that as well. Although hotel occupancy declined during 2016, it's important that we shore that up and work on driving more and more business for 2017. We've got meetings planned with the casinos, working on how we can work more cooperatively together. When you see in magazine, for example, and you look at the ads that are in it, you will see multiple ads for a New Orleans or a Baton Rouge. It may be the Convention and Visitors Bureau, a few hotels, maybe some restaurants, but there are several out-marketing that area. When you see ads for Shreveport Bossier, we're usually the lone marketer. Most of the casinos have pulled back. They are doing mostly direct mail and direct marketing to their specific gamers. So we're really the agency out there promoting. So it's very important that we make sure that that's effective and is producing the greatest return on investment possible. Want to say a special thank you to you, Mayor Walker, and to the council. You were all instrumental in getting the new occupancy tax passed that went to the Sports Commission, the Regional Air Service Alliance, and the Independence Bowl. With that fund, with, also with Dawn Commissioner, Councilman Williams, his support, as well as Clay Bohannon on the Sports Commission, we've been able to secure several events for 2016, as well as looking into the future. So some of those wins were the Hot Air Balloon Championships, the NBA Pelicans game, as well as the Powerboat Nationals. One of the reasons we chose the Powerboat Nationals was because we were going to be able to host it right in the riverfront area, where it could benefit the boardwalk, those that could see it from Shreveport side, even though there was some construction, but really working on that angle of driving business for them. And many of the businesses within the boardwalk saw sometimes two and three times their normal sales on that day. Many of them said it was their best day ever in sales. So it's important that we drive that business and those tax dollars by hosting events that will provide that great economic impact. Another reason was the television coverage. It continues to provide economic impact because of the coverage of the Shreveport Bossier area and especially the Bossier City and the Boardwalk area for the future. Just because it hasn't been done before doesn't mean we can't do it. Our staff is constantly looking for ways that we can develop markets. One of those is the culinary market. We don't really have a signature chef from our area that's promoted across the country. So we've been working on developing our own. So if you go on YouTube, some of the videos that you will see are about an eat here event, and you have the eat here guide, where we featured some chefs from Shreveport Bossier, and we work on promoting those throughout the year to drive more people coming to Shreveport Bossier for the culinary market. We also have recipe cards, advertising, the videos, and the special event all help to drive that culinary tourism. Because of that, we've been able to host a number of culinary writers in our area, which then provides that future economic impact as well. They go out, write stories about our area and our culinary tourism and drive that business back. Also, we work with different divisions of the Bureau, also Holiday Trail of Lights, and part of the video that you saw was also promoting the other areas around us, as well as the Boomer Bus Byway and the Film Office are all ones we work together with. When you look at the budgets within the Sports Department, you will see the budget for the staffing, the sales, the trade shows, the staff travel, and the advertising associated with generating events and bringing events to Shreveport Bossier. In the Sports Commission budget, you see actually the events budget, so what it takes to put on the event. So the Bureau is still underwriting all of the operations, and those new tax dollars are going towards putting on the events and hosting them here in the area. Overall, we're projecting to end the year down. We have had to go in and amend the Bureau budget. We are down in our income, but we've also significantly reduced our expenses. We expect 2017 to be flat compared to what we expect to receive for 2016. But we've had to cut our expenditures about $700,000 from what we originally planned for 2016 to what we expect for 2017. So we're really working to be fiscally sound. As you know, all of your tax dollars are down as well, and just making sure that we're using those as effectively as possible. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, appreciate you allowing me to come. Don't forget, our open house is Friday, December 2, from 11 to 2. You definitely want to make that.
I had one question. You may not have this right on your mind, Stacy. The bond repayment that is $142.9 a year, is, what, those, that, those bonds were probably issued for what, the headquarters that you're in?
Yes, for the new building and the displaced.
I was just curious, and I don't know why you carry this around, you hadn't begun to know what the balance is on that.
I was just thinking of the other, we have about, about seven years left on that bond.
Just curious. Okay. Thank you.
Stacy, I just wanted to thank you. You've included two years of history on here, and I find that very helpful. It's also good to see that the deficit's been significantly reduced for 2017. What are your plans in the future if things don't turn around? Because the fund balances.
And part of what we've used back when Katrina hit, we actually had an increase in revenue, because even though we expected to receive no tax dollars for those that were staying in the hotels because of FEMA, we had cut our expenses, but instead, we actually had more revenue. So from that time, we've been able to kind of dull that out and use it as we go. Sorry if you're hitting that. So we've been able to use those funds in future years. We have been very fiscally sound in setting aside a reserve. We have special marketing funds set aside as well, so that if we do hit a really bad patch, we do have some funds that we can pull up and use. So we are being very conservative in our budgeting, but we do have some set aside as well.
Yeah, I'm glad to see your revenue projection. You kept that flat. That's conservative.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown, we spoke a little bit earlier regarding Bossier side, especially the Bossier re-envisioning project that we got going on. Could you share with the council, you know, your perspective, how we can market it when the time comes?
That area will be very exciting to visitors. And with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, our main goal will be to market it to visitors. We'll do some local marketing, because we try to make sure that locals know what's going on, but our focus is not the local people. And though an offshoot of what we do also applies to economic development and growing business, that's not our major focus. So we will promote it as a visitor destination, but hopefully, some of the offshoot of that will also encourage local people to come. That'll be a tremendous asset for Bossier in attracting visitors.
Any other questions?
Yes. Stacy, you mentioned that when, when people do a search on the Shreveport Bossier area, a lot of times, there won't be some positive things out there. How do we, how do you ensure that, I mean, I just did a Google search, Shreveport Bossier, and everything I saw was, was starting with the Chamber. I mean, it's all positive. It's all, it's all good. What are you doing to ensure that that's what comes up on a search? Is there anything that you can do?
There are a number of things you can do. Part of it is looking for what are those terms that people are searching and making sure that you're, you're using those terms so that it comes up organically. There are also some paid things you can do to help boost your post and make it come up sooner. So there are several things that we do to help generate that. Also, the more people that are viewing it, the more it will show up. So sharing that with our visitors and with others and other, locally as well, helps boost that and keep, keep it moving up as well.
Okay. Thank you. Stacy, the last meeting we had, the Chamber come up, and we were discussing material that people might receive if they were going to move to this area. Do you have any material that would be moved to Shreveport Bossier-type material, or is everything more along these lines, tourist-related and event-related?
We are really visitor-focused, because that is our mission. We're funded by the hotel tax, and our specific mission is to go out and bring those overnight visitors into our community. We do share our resources, so we'll share our photography, our videos and materials, and send those out. You know, the Chamber uses them a lot with their newcomers guide and that kind of thing, but we don't do a newcomers guide, and we don't specifically market to those people that are looking to come to Shreveport Bossier.
The Chamber and the Bossier Economic Development Foundation are good places for those.
Yes. And so we really work hand-in-hand, utilizing each other's resources and helping each other, because some of what we do in attracting visitors is going to encourage businesses to come and vice versa. Some people are going to come here looking to possibly relocate their business and be a visitor. So it's important that we work very closely together.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Stacy, to you and your staff and the Bureau, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Joe Littlejohn?
Thank you very much, council.
You could state your name and address, please.
I state your name.
Provide your name and your address.
Joe Littlejohn, 111 Robert E. Lee Place, Bossier City, 71111.
Thank you.
I was last here and spoke to you on July 15 of last year about Diamond Jack's Casino and the noise emanating from the pool from an outdoor concert. And things have been what I'm going to call relatively quiet over the last six months, 16 months, until this past Friday night, when they had the Bret Michaels concert. We were home at 8:22 PM. The music started, and I can assure you, they were in violation of every nuisance noise ordinance that you've got. It was totally incredible. And the treble, we cannot hear inside our house with the TV on, but the bass goes right through the whole thing. What I'm doing today is asking you, asking the city, to please enforce the rules regarding the nuisance sound ordinance. The rules, in my The rules, in my reading, do not exempt concerts inside a facility. This was an indoor concert. To me, it's just incredible that the sound was so loud. And so what I'd like for you to do, if you would, is to help me seek cooperation between the city and Diamond Jack's to eliminate this problem in the future. Thank you very much.
Now, Joe, you know you was at that concert, and you was yelling too loud, okay?
Yeah, wasn't me, believe me.
So you were hearing this noise? It was an indoor concert, and it was coming through the walls?
Coming through the walls.
Of Diamond Jack's and all the way to your house.
That's right.
Through the walls of your house.
Weren't the doors open?
There was some doors open some of the time. I don't know if people were smoking cigarettes, or they had smoke in the stage show, but there was a lot of smoke coming out the doors there at the east end of that concert hall. I'm not sure what the smoke was from.
Mayor? Mr. Littlejohn, as you know, you called me and missed me, and I call you back the next day.
I appreciate that.
And you didn't call me back the next day. The ordinance covers from 10:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning. Was it after 10:00 at night?
Well, the way I read the ordinance, the ordinance is a 24-hour-a-day ordinance, that if the sound can be heard 25 feet or more from the source, then it's not legal. And there's not a thing in there that I read that has anything to do with times of day.
It does, from 10:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning.
Is that a recent change?
Mr. Hall? Yes, it's 10 to 7, the loud noise ordinance that we have. I mean, you may be reading something different that may or may not be applicable to that, but...
So you think it is? That's not a recent change, huh?
No, it isn't.
No, it's not a recent change. It's been around for quite a while.
Okay, well, I just read what was on the city website, so I'll get back and read that again. So does that mean then that something would change at 10:00 PM?
Should mean that they stop, but I would say, when you encounter that again, if you would call us right then and there, and we can get some people out there.
Who should specifically, should I call? I called my councilman the other day.
Call you, Mayor.
Call the mayor? Okay, okay, good.
Could you give us that cell number? Yeah, Joe did call me, and immediately, the police were dispatched out there. I have not received any kind of a briefing or anything as to what transpired from that point, so...
We will address your concern.
Okay. I appreciate it very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, on committee reports, Phyllis, we decided we're going to defer that for two weeks till when Mr. Buffington returns.
Oh, y'all want to wait two weeks for it? Y'all want to wait two weeks for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever we need to do.
So it'll be December the 6th?
Do we need to vote on that, or just leave it?
Just leave it.
Okay. Unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to adopt the hotel motel taxes fund budget for 2017, final reading.
I'd like to just make a motion. We go ahead and adopt this budget as is, and I know we was waiting on the other second. Let's, you know, get the meetings together, and I don't think we're in any kind of hurry on this. We could, you know, unless we have it done by the end of the year or first of the year sometime.
So we have a motion in a second. Would anybody, is there any discussion?
Appreciate the significance of that.
Let me just, I don't mean to, just for clarity purposes, Mr. Buffington's not here today, but there was concern at our last meeting as to what was published, and Phyllis, correct me if I'm wrong, but what was published was no allocation to the Chamber.
Correct.
Which means that to have that included in this budget, there would have to be a motion on the floor.
To amend it.
To amend the budget and add the $83,333, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And then vote on that motion.
And then it would be reintroduced.
Originally, we were, Mr. Williams had offered a motion to take it out. Well, it's not in there, so it will, if the wishes of someone on the council are to have that included, the motion will need to be made to add that money.
Well, all I'm going to do is just, we could wipe this thing out, get the whole budget out of the way, get with Lisa on the meetings. I mean, I don't understand the hurry right now. I mean, we got December and...
I was just explaining to everybody. So is everybody clear?
And so where we are now, formally, is we have this as a, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance without it.
That's correct.
And did we get a second to that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Darby?
Mr. Darby.
We have a motion and a second. And then, so now we're in, I was just trying to catch up. So we're in discussion, and the significance of this is that this, in fact, does not provide for the Chamber Commerce. So now, we have a choice of either passing this and then later amending the budget.
Jimmy, can't we just come back with a budget, I mean, an ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, you can amend it right now, offer an amendment to amend the budget and include it. And the reason it's not included, it wasn't advertised. I mean, it wasn't an advertisement that was run, so in my opinion, I told you that you could do that, or you can wait and offer an amendment to the budget to include it at some later time.
The other reason is, I mean, I know $83,000 was in there. Scott had offered amendment for $25,000, so maybe we're, none of us on the right page or the same page. You know, Lisa had wanted some dialogue, and I know somebody from the school board want to be involved, and CSRI want to be involved in these meetings, so, you know, it's not, I don't think it's that big a hurry. We can still do it. It's not that I'm against it. I just want to see what the heads do.
The only significance of it is that, you know, we don't have a meeting next week, and so we're rapidly proceeding to December. And if you're going to hire somebody and begin to put the stuff together, it sort of, the significance is the fiscal year ends or in December. So, you know, if you're going to move forward in 2017, somehow, some way, there has to be a decision one way or the other.
Well, that hiring may be another question. I mean, I don't want to be on the hook for hiring. I mean, I know they will, but can, it looks like right now, they may only get $25,000 or $50,000. So what are they going to do with hiring a person, having wanted to do what they wanted to do?
I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, whatever moves they're going to make with whatever budget's approved, they have to know the number to be able to figure out how that's going to go forward.
So we need to get this meeting done and done quickly if we can. Is that possible?
Mr. Larkin?
Since we're in discussion about the motion, I was, my preference would be to move forward on it, because I don't, I don't think there's something else I'm going to learn that's going to change my mind, but I don't, I don't know if that is necessarily the same thing that the council is thinking, but it would seem to me, I guess one way to test that would just for me to offer a substitute motion that we would vote on, and then if it carries, then the council, I guess, would be of a mind to move forward with it, and if it fails, then they would want to study it further as you propose, so...
Can I say this for you? This was three entities that started out with it.
Yeah, I will. I'll yield. Sure, go ahead. Yes, sir.
One entity, the sheriff fell out, no part.
Right, I'm aware of that.
The police jury has gone on $25,000. So again, let's just wait and see what it's all about. Let's talk to her, get a meeting, and go from there. I mean, I don't understand the hurry right now. I understand what Jimmy said, but, you know, anyway, that's my motion, and, you know...
Mr. Darby?
Okay, Mr. President, what I want to remind the council of is that Mr. Williams recommended and requested on last meeting that Ms. Johnson makes sure she get all of the other entities involved, and that was his recommendation. And then we were going to move forward. So I think before we can do an amendment to this ordinance, we need to make sure that she's done that part of it, because there's other folks involved other than this council. So I think we need to make sure that happens.
I guess my other point is, the reason for the meeting in my case is, they started out at $250,000, okay? That's what they requested. Now we're down to $50,000. So between 50 and 250, what can they do with $50,000 and they wanted $250,000? A whole, whole, whole lot less, especially hiring somebody with that $50,000, so there's a lot of questions to be answered.
Mr. Larkin?
Well, I don't think I, I'll make the motion that we, and I'm trying to think of what the procedure here is.
To add the $83,333 to be funded to the Chamber for their effort.
Is it an amendment to the motion, or is it a substitute motion?
Offer an amended motion, then we vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the amended motion if it gets...
Why don't we, we don't vote on the motion first?
No.
No. We have a motion on the floor to discuss...
In a second.
Well, that's assumed. We, so we're discussing the budget right now. That budget can be amended on the floor by anybody on the city council, and then if a second happens, then there's a vote. If that fails, then we're back where we started.
Yeah, it's...
On the, we're voting on the motion to amend. And then you vote on the budget as amended, correct?
Yeah, we have to have an amendment and a second.
Right.
So I'll offer that motion to amend this, to amend the motion to adopt the ordinance to include the $83,000 expenditure.
$333.
The $333,000 expenditure to the motion. I would offer that as an amendment, and then, and so that needs a second, if there's someone else that thinks that way.
A second.
And then, now, now, we can discuss that.
And you have that to the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Yes, sir, to the Chamber of Commerce.
The money just to be defended on where he was...
Can I ask a question on discussion from this?
Sure.
All right.
I guess my question to him is, again, we're down to one other entity for $25,000, the police jury, okay? Why would the city be expected to pay 73 times what anybody else pays? Another thing, let me tell you this, and I'm not getting into the police jury's business, but the other thing is, is they authorized $25,000, they set it aside. It wasn't going directly to the Chamber, and then Lisa will come up and when she needs to do something, then she'll come to the police jury or the city council. Well, we hadn't done that, but that needs to be known, too.
My, my argument would be that I would like to see the city take the lead on this, and I would, I would rather that we not, I guess, slow down, split hairs, and otherwise retard a request like this, because I think it's a good one, and I think it's what that money that is, has, the money has been collected from the taxpayers and from the hotel motel industry, and it's put there, and we're supposed to put it to work. And so I think this is a good place to put it to work, and I can't think of a better time that it might come before us, just having just come from that, from that wonderful grand opening that they had over at the computer sciences facility, where over and over and over again, they're talking about how we have, those guys over there, they have jobs, and they're worried about, they're trying to figure out how to get people to come here to, you know, to, to take the job from other places. And Ms. Johnson is talking about that very thing. I mean, you know, you're sitting there out there, and you're saying, you know, go get us some people, come bring them back, and you're giving them nothing. And it just doesn't make sense to me to just be splitting hairs about something like that. You've got millions upon millions upon millions of stuff at stake out there, and you've got your lead horse, you know, trying to find a decent piece of paper to hand somebody. $83,000 bucks for this kind of deal? There's nothing to think about, in my opinion. I want to take the lead. If they don't want, if the others don't want to show up with their $83,000, I don't care. I want, I want her to get the 83, so at least she can go do something with it. And I think she has the kind of judgment, and those people have the kind of judgment. They know what to do with that money. They know how to best employ it. And I know that if we give them nothing, then that's what we should expect back, nothing.
There's more research you need to do into it first, though.
Sure.
Maybe there's more research you need to do into it first, but that's your opinion.
Yeah, and I, I feel strongly about it.
Mr. Harvey?
Well, is there any way that Lisa could give us an idea on what she could do with R83 plus the 25 that we're getting from the police jury? I mean, that's more than half what you were originally requesting.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Lisa Johnson, President, Bossier Chamber.
Thank you.
Anything else? Address?
I think we know where it is.
Okay. Again, I appreciate the dialogue and the conversations, and I've been sending additional information and, and baba, I, the meetings are going to happen, and Councilman Darby, yes, my appreciation, if, with all due respect, if I can address the meetings that were requested of me to put everyone together. If I heard it correctly from two weeks ago, it was requested that the mayor and I together get those meetings, and we have discussed those meetings, anticipating what was going to happen today, so that we would know how to move forward. So we have been in discussion of when the appropriate time for those meetings were to happen. So we have, we have not, I have not been sitting on that request from the council, just so that you're aware of that, okay? So what can we do with half of the money? Well, that remains to be seen. And you all have received the proposal from, from me through Phyllis, and then some additional information. And in that proposal, if, and hopefully you did, I'll read it, because you're very good at doing your due diligence and your research, and that's why you're having this dialogue among yourselves up here. It states in there that 2017 is to be a foundation, to really build that foundation, and that there will be meetings and quarterly meetings of the players, meaning those that are funding this project, and whomever else that is necessary to be on that, if you will, an advisory committee to say, this is how we're going to spend that, that money, and where we're going to spend it at exactly. Will we be able to hire someone else? I get from folks, you don't need someone specifically to do this, you do need someone specifically to do this. And, you know, will I have enough money to do that? I don't know. Can we absorb it internally? I don't know that either, because we still have a full-time Chamber job to do. That's first and foremost. This is completely aside from that. And as I've been talking to my board of directors at the Chamber of Commerce, and we're preparing our Chamber of Commerce budget, I continue to remind them that the request that we have put out is completely separate and aside from our Chamber of Commerce budget. And so we still have our job to do there, to take care of our membership and our investors as it relates to that. So we will take this opportunity, and we will be good stewards of the money and have a fiduciary responsibility of the taxpayers' dollars, as you are. And this is through the hotel motel tax, so it's through the visitors' dollars that are staying in our hotel rooms, and make sure that that is spending, being spent appropriately out of area. So there's an, you know, an external marketing idea that is here for folks that are looking at relocating to the area, and it's not just about new companies. It's about those companies that are existing and are still here today. And I don't want to belabor my talks today, but I do want to share with you that over the last two years, as we have had these new companies coming in, we have had other companies that have contacted us and have said, as Bintler still has moved into the area, I've lost employees to the new company. I've lost employees to this new company, to this new IT company, and we now need employees. Can you help us find those employees? And we've always have stated, there's a huge education in this community... And we've always have stated, there's a huge education in this community about the talent that's moving in to Barksdale Air Force Base. We talked about that last time, and it was talked about, um, in some recent news articles. Those folks that are moving in here come with spouses, and they're talented and they're trained. And yes, sometimes, most of the time, they don't have a choice, but sometimes at an officer level, they do. And they don't always have to choose here. They can say, "I want to choose another place." But we want to make sure that when they hear Bossier City, Louisiana, they know exactly who we're talking about and the community that we're talking about. And we want to know that whenever they're searching, they are searching Bossier City. And you know, I worked for nearly twenty years in the hospitality industry around here. Stacy and I worked side by side. Convention and Tourist Bureau does a fabulous job, but when you're going to relocate to an area, and you know that you're going to go move, if you're moving to Plano, Texas, do you go and Google Plano? Or do you go and Google Dallas-Fort Worth? So if you're going to move to Bossier, do you go and look up Bossier City, or do you go and look up Shreveport-Bossier?
Lisa, I, I think you know best how to manage this money, but, uh, since you don't know if you're going to receive this on a recurring basis, uh, when you hire an employee, that's a recurring expense. Uh, I, I, I would strongly suggest if, if these funds are approved, that expenditures on things like web search management.
Absolutely.
Would, would be high priority. A quality website for moved to Bossier would be, uh, high priority. A video in our area, and, and I saw what the, uh, uh, Bossier Economic Development Foundation released, and that was good. And then printed material was critical on why people should move maybe to Bossier City, and also Bossier Parish. I mean, you can expand. Uh, and, and I imagine the state has information on why people should move to Louisiana. And then you have a comprehensive package of material that can be shared with any company that's coming here. They have human resource people where they're working to attract people, but they need tools. And so that, that is my two cents worth on how I would spend the money, uh, because you spend it once and you have it. And now it needs to be updated, and I'm sure there's, uh, ongoing expenses, but you wouldn't be, uh, having to have, pay for an employee here after here, not knowing where your revenue is coming from.
Correct. And you, right. And you, and the, and the internet, the search engines, and the, uh, just as Stacy said, there's, there's paid opportunities to be able to make sure that you get up to the top. Um, was specifically talked about for the YouTube. A couple of weeks ago, I went on and I, uh, online, and I specifically did, uh, YouTube. So these examples that I have here are, um, a couple of weeks old. It changes every day. But for Bossier City, when, um, I just searched on YouTube, "Bossier," it was "The Turnpike Troubadours," "A Random Bossier Fight," "The Bossier City Flood of Twenty-Sixteen," "David Alpo," and "Shreveport-Bossier City Red River Flooding of Twenty-Fifteen" were the top five videos. "Bossier City, Louisiana," the top first video was "Shreveport-Bossier: See It, Bet It, Taste It," video of the Convention and Tourist Bureau. "The Bossier City Flood of Twenty-Sixteen," Louisiana Boardwalk. "Tour Update," Bossier City, Louisiana. And a seven years ago video of Shreveport and Bossier City, Louisiana, Red River at Night. And if we say, "Where's Bossier City located?" And you say, "Well, have you heard of Shreveport?" And we're next door. And they go and they look at Shreveport, and YouTube Shreveport. "Shreveport, Louisiana," two weeks ago, the top five videos were. The top, "The Real Streets of Shreveport, Louisiana," "Shreveport, Louisiana Bloods," "Shreveport, Louisiana Vlog Day One," "A Week in Shreveport, Louisiana," "Shreveport Fight Compilation Part One." If you look up "Shreveport-Bossier" on YouTube, the videos were "Shreveport-Bossier: See It, Bet It, Taste It," "Shreveport-Bossier, Louisiana Diverse Entertainment Cruises, Casinos and Nightlife," Tourist Bureau. The third video, "Shreveport-Bossier City Red River Flooding Twenty-Fifteen," "Shreveport-Bossier, Louisiana," "Shreveport, USA Holiday Fun and Food and Culture," Tourist Bureau. And the fifth video, "Shreveport-Bossier Flooding June Seventh, Twenty-Fifteen." I'm not interested in moving to an area that's going to flood all the time, if that's all I see. And there are things, yes, that you can do to make sure that your videos move up to the top.
And, and that, that's my point.
And it takes someone to do that.
Not, not salary expenses on a person. That, I think that would be the why is this expenditure.
Yes, sir. It, it takes resources, and sometimes it, it does require a person to make sure that someone's paying attention to this.
Amen.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the audience for questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
What you're voting on, adding, amending the budget, right?
Let's go back. Yep, there, we introduced the budget, and there's an amendment on the floor by Mr. Larkin, second.
By Mr. Frank.
To, uh, add the expenditure to the chamber of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. So this is a vote to add that expenditure to the hotel motel, uh, tax, uh, budget for two thousand and seventeen.
Correct.
Everybody clear? Everybody in the audience have questions? Counsel, please cast your vote. All right, motion passes. Do we need to?
You need a motion to reintroduce the budget as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, the budget is approved, is amended. Uh, Ms. Johnson?
On the sixth.
Huh?
It will now be adopted on the sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, that was the first reading. Yes, sorry. There'll be a second reading. But just for clarification, um, I think Mr. Williams had asked, and, uh, Mr. Darby, Ms. Johnson, if you could come to the mic, please, real quick, just for clarification as far as the, um, city, the people that are actually donating the money, the bodies, that they're a part of this quarterly meeting in reference to their concerns of how the money's going to be spent, correct?
Yes, sir. And who from the council would be the representative? Because I know if all of you were there, that gets into.
I think that's something that we can discuss, you know.
So would you, as the president of the council, let me know?
As the president of the council, I'll have two volunteers that, or we actually can have three, I guess.
Sure.
Without a quorum, so it could be.
Absolutely.
Two or three, and we'll, we'll let you know who those people will be.
Absolutely.
If, if it, in fact, passes on November sixth.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, is, I mean, it does say final reading here. Since we amended it, does that move it to December?
The motion that was just made is to reintroduce it as amended, so it was introduced today as amended with the appropriation in it, and it has to be adopted on December the sixth.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
All right.
All right. Item number two. Adopt an ordinance to repeal ordinance one oh eight of twenty-twelve and repeal ordinance sixty-four of two thousand and eight, and repeal ordinance seventy-nine of two thousand and eight, and to clarify and enact a flood damage prevention ordinance as described in Exhibit A, in order for Bossier City to remain consistent with the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations. Final reading.
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to repair a collapsed sewer main at the location of Dot and Sullivan. Final reading.
So moved.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Dollar General, Louisiana, doing business at Dollar General Store one oh six three two, location twenty-one hundred Stockwell Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for off-premise consumption of low content alcoholic beverages, wine, and wine products at a Dollar General store.
So moved.
Second.
Fully clarified what they're doing now, but I also want to say, uh, all three of these applications, there was significant notification to the surrounding property owners, and there was no public opposition to any of these three that are before you today.
Is this one the MPC had problems with yesterday?
Sir?
Is this a store the MPC had problems with yesterday?
Uh, it was a fourth Dollar General.
Oh, I see, it's on Swan Lake, okay.
Yes, we're working through those issues now. That's why I want these, I wanted to clarify, the three we're dealing with now, there was absolutely no opposition to anything they wanted to do.
So, Mrs., do we have all three of those in here today?
Yes, sir.
Well, good.
There is a fourth. It hasn't not come to you yet. It's been tabled by us.
There were several MPC members, really, and I didn't know this, I would have brought this up last week, had problems with selling alcohol in the Dollar Generals. One lady spoke that, that she did a great job.
Yes, she definitely, she was very articulate in her thoughts on that.
But you know, uh, they're only going to put eight foot of beer and wine in there.
Correct.
So, and I agree with her. You know, we're taking, this place that sells kids' clothes, women's clothes, bath accessories, whatever. But, you know, it's not a money, it's not a money thing. It's only eight foot. I think they can do without eight foot. Because the one in my area, actually I got two, but the one down the street from me, there's a big housing development right next door where kids break through the fence to come in there. I know the fire department went there. And these ladies are all, they're all, they're all junky. I mean, I go in there a lot, believe me, but the aisles are cluttered. You can't get through. I think Fire Chief Brad sent somebody down there. You couldn't even get a wheelchair in the door through the aisles. But, you know, I'm again, I'm, just like one of the guys I just said, I'm against the Dollar General store selling, selling wine and beer. There, there's enough around, especially right close to these little neighborhoods. And there's Steven going in all the time, because I catch him, and I tell him, "You're going to go to jail." You know, they put it in the pocket and walk out.
Yeah.
You know, with beer and wine. I know that's not a whole lot, but it's going to get worse.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of communities looking at various ways to deal with this. A lot of it deals with density. Uh, the, uh, the lady that spoke yesterday talked about other, so much other being sold in the area. And so I want to do some due diligence research for the zoning board before they decide on this last one.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd like to just say we, we don't let them. I mean, the one in my, the one I'm talking about in my district, okay?
MPC's a recommendation. The council has final say, just like a zoning amendment change.
I think it's like thirty-three hundred. Of course, the address would be in here. That's just what I feel.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hall. I mean, we, we addressed this, um, gosh, years ago. Um, there was a gentleman that wanted to serve alcoholic beverages with coffee, uh, in California Plaza, you recall? Merle, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, somebody else was selling liquor within the same plaza. I mean, what I'm worried about is, from a legal standpoint, you know, what grounds do we have to deny someone the opportunity to sell alcohol when others are doing the same around? I mean, where is it in the law that you can say, "Okay, we've got enough alcohol sales"?
Well, it is not there. You know, you have objective criteria that you can apply, but the problem is that when you compare them to CVS, CVS has twenty feet or thirty feet of alcohol. And so what you're doing is just, you know, if we want to create some, uh, MPC-generated, uh, criteria that says if there's a housing project or there's a neighborhood close by, uh, but, but, you know, there's almost every Walgreens, CVS, other stores like that, and, and maybe we want to say if they sell children's clothes, but we need to establish something that will be applied across the board to those people that create that, so it's not just like, "I don't like them selling near here, and this one's okay, that one's not okay." That's, that's arbitrary and capricious. And last time we went down that path, it didn't work out so good. And so, you know, one, one of the things I'm saying is that we may want to send back to the MPC a task to look at those criteria that would be justifiable to create a, a situation where we apply it equally. And, and maybe some of the things that you said, Mr. Williams, about children's clothing, uh, other, other aspects that differentiate those places in your mind, that, that would create that, that criteria.
Well, this lady said yesterday, made such a good point, Tommy Herter, we're, we're taking away groceries or items that families need, and we're putting beer and wine in there, you know, which was a good point. And this, this neighborhood is thirty feet from the store. You know, over drainers ditch, and there you are.
Well, and then another thing may be the proximity to residential living. You know, the, you know, it, it, it may not be as big a deal if it's a half mile from the closest residence. It may be a bigger deal if the closest residential area is, is right next door across the ditch. So, and the other thing is that, that, uh, you know, if you have clothing, uh, I can think off the top of my head, if you have the things that would, would, people would bring children in there, and the, and the constricture of the aisles and stuff as such, it would be easy enough for teenagers to, to try to shoplift, uh, you know, some of the, some of the alcohol. So, you know, it, it may be those things that need to be looked at so that we can apply them equally. And, and that's the only thing I'm asking, is that we consider.
Can we just send it back to Sam?
Send it back to the MPC for them to come up with a criteria.
Do we need a motion?
I agree with him for that. The ordinance I've seen are usually, uh, many of them are based on density, the number of, uh, establishments that sell alcohol in a certain radius or something. Uh, there's various ways to do it, but he, he's absolutely correct. You need some criteria to be able to apply to it.
And I'll work with them on, you just, you've illuminated enough things that we can put it down, but before we do that, let's set the criteria so people, when they look at the ordinance, would know what they can't do and what they can do, and why they might not be treated like other people because of their location. Uh, we, we, we had, uh, uh, some, some issues one time on a, on a place on Airline Drive like that, that, uh, and it, and it became a problem. So, so I think the better methodology is to make a motion to return it to the MPC, to come back with recommendations for amendment to the alcohol ordinance to create criteria for certain locations that wouldn't receive alcohol. And then we'll have the council approve those, and then, you know, move forward after that.
That's good.
Want to make?
Oh, yeah, I'll make that motion, what Jimmy said.
Phyllis, do you get that, whatever Jimmy said?
Send it back to the MPC.
You can put that, whatever Jimmy said, in quotation marks, and... So we have a motion to send it back?
That's on all three?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need a, a second?
Motion to combine them. Jimmy?
Yeah, I, I think we should combine them and send them all back, because the whole idea is to have.
All right, so we need a mo- motion to combine all three first.
Four, five, and six.
All right.
I'll make a motion to combine.
All right. Second. Questions from the audience? This is a motion just to combine. Counsel, please cast your vote. And now the amendment to.
You know, I just have one, one other question.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Irwin.
Huh?
Williams and Irwin. I voted yes.
Hold on. Let's, one thing, let's.
She's waiting on his vote, though.
Mr. Irwin.
All right.
So I just had a, a question before we, we've earned this. It wasn't long.
We need a motion to amend it. Is that what you're going to be speaking to?
Uh, yes, I was going to speak to the amendment.
Okay, well, let, we haven't made that amendment yet, and so you.
I like the amendment.
All three.
Offer an amendment to what Jimmy.
Jimmy said.
Jimmy said, and send it back to the MPC.
All right, and we need a second on that. Need a second to discuss, just to discuss.
I'll say.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Irwin.
It was not very long ago that these stores did not sell tobacco either. My, my question is, do we want to include tobacco in this as well as alcohol?
Think you're bringing up, I don't know, I would defer to Mr. Hall, but that's another can of worms.
I mean, it's something we can take a look at. I mean, they, you know, the problem is that it's one thing to stop the train before it's left the station. Once it's left, it's a whole different animal, because they, now they know the exact amount of damages they'll incur for the regulation coming into effect. So my recommendation is we stick to the alcohol issue, and, and we've already let the cow out of the barn, so to speak, with regard to the tobacco.
And this is another thing, this lady brought it up, say, that, that she's ready, they're going to buy the family Dollar Stores, too. Not the Dollar General, they're going to buy family Dollar Stores. You're going to have it, uh, it's going to be rampant everywhere.
You're right.
You know, so if we get this done, it.
That's why I'm trying to make it uniform, so it applies to those places that reflect that.
Mr. Hall, absolutely. And that's, we've already started, you know, research on that today. And we, uh, actually, our office has a, a subscription service to the American Planning Association. We, we can send them these issues, and they actually look it up for us and, and bring us ideas and such, so. But my, my guess is, when it's sent back, the board will probably table it while we're, as they did the one yesterday while we're doing this research, and see where we go with it.
Thank you. Mr. Larkin? Mr. Larkin?
Well, I'm in support of remanding this back to the MPC, but I would like to say that one of the things that we learned when we began to, you know, look at alcohol under the one title of alcohol, there's, it's subdivided into, wine and beer are considered by the, by the federal government as food. I mean, it doesn't matter whether you agree with or disagree, that's the way they consider it, and then everything else is spirits, alcohol, whiskey, and all that stuff. So my support for this just happens to be along those lines, because there's a good, there's a good bit of people that are frankly offended by somebody objecting to them having wine or beer with, available to them as the food product that it is in so many other parts of the world, and then there are not as many that object to alcohol as the spirit. So when they're considering all that, to me, that, I think that that should be in the consideration of what the MPC looks at. In favor of the motion.
Got our work ahead of us.
Any other input from the council for Sam to carry back to the MPC?
Well, I think I remember, Sam, you mentioned that there are types of, I guess, drinks that are not in this category that's out there now.
Going by just low and high content as how, as a qualifier for what you're selling is getting to be a little difficult. You know, everybody understands beer is under six percent, which is considered low content, but I'm seeing beers on the shelf now more than six percent. And there's a lot of, and you see the uptick of the new hard sodas.
Yeah.
Some of those vary in content levels, so.
So I think that should be.
It's getting to be very confusing.
And part of your research, because.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
That needs to be looked at, because we talked about it.
Wine coolers too, I think you mentioned to me, are they wine coolers, are they different?
Wine coolers are low, but little big bottles of wine are high. But then you've got wine beverages that are low, but a lot lower, you know, that fall into the low content, but they taste like a wine, but they're not a wine.
You just got to use the percentage from now on.
Right, it, there's just, it's all over the place.
Ears that are ten percent?
Yeah, I think the ice beer.
You might want to put doctor titans antiseptic in, this is twenty-one percent.
What's list drain?
Then tastes as good, though.
So Joe, instead of calling it high and low content, can we look at using alcohol percentage?
Well, with conditional use approvals, you can actually use for the, that's one thing I will check into, if we could actually put a percentage in that ordinance. That's what is good about conditional use approvals, you can attach conditions to the ordinances and to the recommendations from the MPC regarding those, different from just a regular zoning amendment or something. And they can look at each individual circumstance and make conditions to that approval for those.
It'd be hard for stores to figure out, though, which ones.
Well, we'll have to pass, we'll also have to amend the ordinances on enforcement of alcohol sales so that it covers the new definitions so that they can easily be enforced.
Any other discussion? Discussion from the audience, questions? Council, please cast your vote.
Thanks.
We'll get to work. New business?
Adopt an ordinance declaring an emergency does exist affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public and amending the Fire Department 2016 general fund budget and the 2016 EMS fund budget to reallocate funds from the sale salary lines in each budget to the twenty-four hour overtime lines in each budget, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance approving the acquisition of the property described as 409 Arcadia Street, authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Re-Envisioning Project, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey? Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $200,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to replace failed storm sewer culvert running along the rear property line of the 2600 block of Bardo Lane, first reading.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $190,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to design and construct traffic signals for the Stockwell Road-Shed Road intersection, first reading.
So moved.
Second. I need that, can I, Mark, can you come here and say? Real quick, just quick question. So these lights run 24 hours a day? Can we, do we have to run 24 hours a day? Can you put them like blinking at? I was down there about four thirty-five this morning, and there wasn't a vehicle on that street.
Yeah.
Either way that I could see.
Well, John Kelly will adjust the timing for the various times of the day, and all of our traffic signals now have cameras? Cameras. So if there's no traffic there, Shed Road will dwell in green, it'll stay green.
Supposedly.
Unless, unless, yes, unless I'm going down Benton Road and it's Citizens Bank Drive,
and it sees me coming and it goes, uh-oh, we got him, click, click, stop, you're looking around, there's nobody going, and I'm thinking, Mark Hudson, Mark Hudson. And I run the red light, so anyway.
So same on Stockwell and Shed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's because we've installed something in your vehicle, Mr. Montgomery.
Believe me, I know. And when I go through airport security with Mr. Hall, the same thing happens. Sir, you go over here.
He's got a chip implanted.
Yep. Thank you.
The thing I can understand is, all the years you've been on the council, and Mark didn't give you one of those clickers he gave all us to just let you go right through the line.
They told me they don't exist, but I've got the reverse clicker, it stops me rather than letting me go through.
We did have a motion, second.
We did have a motion, second, yes.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $190,000 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to design and construct traffic signals for the Hickory Ridge Road-Shed Road intersection, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce a supplemental bond ordinance authorizing issuance of not exceeding $8 million of utilities revenue refunding bonds, Series 2017, of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of a general bond ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, for the purpose of defusing and currently refunding its outstanding utilities revenue refunding bonds, Series 2010, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds, and for the rights of the owners thereof, approving the official statement, awarding the bonds to the purchaser thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing and providing for issuance of $15 million of public improvement sales tax revenue bonds, Series ST 2017, of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the executive officers of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, to execute a bond purchase agreement in connection with certain public improvement sales tax revenue bonds, Series ST 2017, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin? Adopt a resolution authorizing the executive officers of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, to execute a bond purchase agreement in connection with certain utilities revenue refunding bonds, 2017 series, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one superintendent in the water treatment plant to replace a vacant position in public utilities, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Approve the recommendation to appoint Robin Harville as the commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Bossier Housing Authority to replace Francisco Frank Villa, appointment effective December 1st, 2016, and expires July 18th, 2018.
So moved. Ms. Harville, thank you for your service and volunteering. Questions? Council, please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order for Douglas Plantation Phase II, an increase of $191,084 total cost of contract with increase $5,479,182.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote two utility workers in water distribution to replace vacant positions in public utilities, first and final reading.
So moved. Question from the audience? Council, please.
Oh, who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do second.
We're good.
Do second.
Second.
Thank you.
By the time you do something.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Any further business, Mayor?
I have one. Just a couple of quick comments. In reorganizing the Coordinating Development Cooperation, we have added a chief of operations, and that's our own vote least, Juror Bump Skaggs has been elected at position, so he's now staffed the Coordinating Development Corporation. And the second thing is, I think, Jimmy, somebody's already mentioned it, we do not have a meeting next week, as I understand it. That's right. For you out there in TV land.
Mr. Darby?
Mr. President, I wanted to commend Ms. Glorioso for her efforts and work on that demolition proposal that came before us a couple of weeks ago, and she did so much work to get a resolve, and I mean, it really did happen. I'm sure that family appreciate her advocacy, and now we didn't make a decision, I'm glad we didn't, because that person really needed some assistance, and she did a great job. She, I know you guys got your information that she sent to us, and my last statement is to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and God blessings.
Thank you, Ms. Glorioso, and God bless America. Meeting adjourned.